And we're going to start the video. So now you'll see your square in a second here. Okay, unmute. Okay, now you're unmuted.
Okay, can I talk?
Yeah.
Hey Ron, can you hear me? This is John.
Hi, John, I can hear you. It's Rita.
Oh, hi. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm well.
Can she see?
Can you see me at all?
Yeah, I can see.
Okay, she can see me.
Okay, start my video. There, you should be able to see me too.
Okay, great.
And.
Are you at home?
I'm at home, yeah. I think Ron is sharing his screen, so you'll probably just see the dais right now, but you might see me off in the corner.
All right.
Oh, there we go. Okay. BJ, okay, there's BJ.
BJ's on.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you BJ, cannot see you yet.
Oh, I wonder why. BJ, just at the top, there's a little button that says show video. It looks like a movie camera. I don't see it. I have participants and then I have panelists and attendees. I don't have show camera.
Next to the mute button?
Uh, more.
More. Press more, see what's in there.
Says rename.
No.
I have my wife with me. She's the expert.
I know, Martha's great.
Um, so are you on an iPad or a laptop?
I'm on my computer.
Okay.
And I have my, my Logitech camera, but I don't know why it's not coming on.
Yeah, so on a computer, the, the displays are a little bit different.
Yeah.
Rita, are you on a computer or on an iPad?
I'm on a computer. BJ, it might be, there might be some buttons in the bottom left corner, but you might have to move your mouse down there to see them. That's where mine are. Yours might be different.
It says invite, mute me, and raise hand. I don't know why. I didn't have trouble before. So it says stop my video with that.
I can see you BJ. My wife just clicked you in.
Oh, oh, oh. Hi.
Hello, dear.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you too, Rita.
Hi, how are you?
I'm fine, and of course Martha.
BJ, we're getting like the top of your head. Maybe just adjust your screen so you.
Wait a minute.
There you go.
That better. Okay, good.
Mike, I see you well. Hey buddy.
Can you hear me?
I, loud and clear.
Great, good.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, BJ.
Oh, there's Ron.
Hi folks.
Hello.
Ron, can you see me? This is John.
I can see you.
Great.
Can you see us all?
Yes, I can. It's very exciting. Hi Rita.
Hi.
Long time no see.
I know.
All right, so I'm trying to figure out what I'm doing here.
Yes, thank you. I'll call. I'll scream if I need any.
I can see my, my plant food in the window behind me, my orchid food.
Looks like Art is listed, but I haven't heard from him yet.
I just promoted him to panelist. I'm just promoting Joe Pyrick to panelist. Now I have to go over here and I have to ask them to start their videos.
Art.
All right, so Joe and Art, I've asked you to start your videos.
All right, there we go.
The dark, you know? I don't see Art.
I don't either.
Wait, he's on twice. Hold on. And he's muted. Right, Art.
Yes.
They say they're.
Well, there's Joe.
Right.
Hi.
Am I?
Are you?
No, how do I look? I just got home from work and quickly changed, so.
You look flushed.
Why can't I see Joe or Art?
Well, it might be the glass of Pinot Noir that I've got hidden over in the corner here.
Oh, aren't you clever? I've got a Diet Pepsi.
There's Joe. I got Joe now. It's gotta be Art.
Hey Art, Art, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Art, you need. Art, you need to mute yourself on one of those devices. You've got two microphones going.
Okay.
Well, I can just mute you. I don't know which device you're using. Can you hear me, Art?
Yeah, well, I'm using. I'm using my phone and my.
You need, you need to turn off the speakers on one of the devices.
Okay, like Lou Gehrig.
Say something, Art, so we know you're there.
Turning my phone off.
See everybody, I slide.
Okay, turn the phone off. How's that?
That's much better. Now, I have to let Paul in. Hold on.
Art, do you have a little movie button that you can press to turn on your video?
Where did, where would that be, Martha?
Are you on the iPad?
No, I'm on my PC. I couldn't make that happen down there, so.
Rita, where is it on the PC?
On mine, it's in the bottom left corner where I have to hover my mouse.
Well, I, I have something that says mute. Then there's a little arrow and then it says stop video.
Try that.
Try that. That should be it for him. Yeah.
There you go. Looks like he's coming up.
Ron, can you hear me?
I got you, Paul.
Okay, good. I, I had trouble getting in this time.
Wait.
And I called your, I called your office and you're not there.
I am not there. I'm in my basement.
Okay, what does Art have to do to get?
You've got the background on the town hall. I like that. Yeah.
Hey, Paul.
Hi, John, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Art's, Art's gonna continue to be the problem child, apparently.
And I clicked on it when it said, uh, start video, I clicked on that, nothing happened. It said Zoom, not responding, so. Apparently, when you're beautiful, it's tough to get on Zoom.
As long as, as long as we can hear, that's the most important thing.
Yeah. Are we in English tonight or are we doing a little Espanol?
What? This is being recorded, so be careful.
My fellow Americans. Ron, wait a second. No, wait a second. Wait a second. Oh, there are the others, okay. Now I can see everybody.
That must be Art.
All right, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen right now and I need to start the YouTube. We're, we're gonna be live on YouTube as well.
Oh, okay.
If I can get this to go.
How about, are we all, we're not all there yet, though, are we?
No, we're not, we're not going yet. Don't, don't worry.
I don't see Bill Nash.
I have to go back and check the, the attendees in a second. I'm just, hold on a minute.
Either Reagan, Toms, or is there?
Hi, Peter.
How come nobody else is wearing a tie?
How come you are?
I had a couple of other, uh, other Zoom meetings today, so. First, first, first time in about a month, figured I'd dress up.
All right, Bill just arrived. Let me get him in.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, Bill.
Hey, Bill.
How we doing?
Well, thank you.
Hey, Bill.
How you working?
There he is.
How are you?
I'm all right. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Hey, good.
Bill, I've been thinking about you. The last time I saw you, you were telling us you were about to go on a cruise.
Ouch, yes. That's not happening.
That never happened, okay.
It did not happen.
Are you familiar with Zoom?
Yes.
You, you're familiar with the raise hand feature?
Uh, yes, I mean, yes, somewhere in there, I'm sure. Yeah. Got my, my COVID-19 scruff going, so.
Yeah, I can see that.
And you have to do the dots.
Got it.
I think we all need to go to have our hair treated and nails and everything else. Oh.
Ron, I'm gonna go by the clock on my computer.
Works for me.
Oh, Ron, you're, you're actually in the office. Look at you. That's not fair.
No, I'm in my basement. I am.
That's not a virtual background.
Sure it is.
Is it really?
Yeah.
He had his basement built to look exactly like.
I love town hall so much, I just had to do it.
That's sad. That's just sad.
I have one minute to go to six o'clock. Do we have any members of the public who have called in?
Uh, we have David Fox and Peter Galoppo attending.
Okay.
Did you tell them?
Hey, Joe.
Hey, how are you?
David Fox, quick question. Are you here representing Irongate?
I am.
Okay, great. I'll put you on mute for the moment and then we'll, we'll get you going once we get to that item.
Thank you, Ron.
Sure.
Would you be able to put him on video?
I can't because, um, actually, I guess I could promote him. Yes, I could promote him to a panelist, which would allow you to see him. Yes, I'll, I'll do that.
Okay. This meeting will come to order. Uh, this is a somewhat irregular, regular meeting of the planning board. Uh, it's a regularly, regular scheduled meeting, but it's being conducted online through the use of Zoom. We have 10 panelists and two attendees. That's what I see on my screen, Ron.
So Art.
I had, I had earlier spoken with Ron and Peter.
Sorry, Paul. Paul, before you get going, you should call the roll in case there are folks that don't have video.
Okay. We're gonna be doing a lot of things by roll call tonight, and I'm going to call it from the, as we normally sit on the, on the dais, I'm going to call it from the outside in. So Joe Pyrick.
Present.
John Chumo.
Present.
BJ Owen.
Here.
Art Webb.
Present.
Mike Fenton.
Here.
Bill Nash.
Here.
And myself, I'm here. Is it okay to proceed now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Some procedures for these online meetings for, uh, open public meetings are being prescribed by the state. And those procedures say that any vote that the board takes must be taken by a roll call voice vote. So whenever we have a vote, I will call the roll. And if you are in favor of whatever is being voted upon, respond aye. If you are against it, respond nay. When we are in discussion mode, in order to avoid confusion under these circumstances, I would ask that you use the raise hand feature. I can see all of the panelists and I can tell when a hand is raised, so I'll keep track and call upon you. But rather than have everybody speaking at the same time, I'd rather try to keep it somewhat orderly. So for discussion purposes, use the raised hand feature. Also, whenever a motion is being made, we need to have the maker of the motion, as well as the person who is seconding the motion, identify themselves. So if you make a motion, please identify yourself. Same if you second it, please identify yourself. With that, we're going to proceed through the agenda as we usually do in a meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the March 11th meeting. Do you have a motion to accept these minutes? So move.
Second.
Please identify yourself.
BJ.
So moved. So Bill Nash made the motion. Did someone second it?
BJ.
BJ seconded the motion. Motion is made and seconded to accept the minutes of March 11th. Is there any discussion? BJ, your hand is up.
No, that's because I was, I had agreed to second the motion.
I think, I think you can clear your hand then if you want to.
Oh, okay. What do I do? Just click it? Oh, got it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Learn something new.
No discussion. All those in favor, I'm sorry, I will call the roll for the approval of the minutes. Joe Pyrick.
Aye.
John Chumo.
Aye.
BJ Owen.
Aye.
Art Webb.
Art, it's Art Weber, by the way.
I'm sorry.
Aye, aye.
Oh, my God. My apologies.
Aye, aye, Paul.
How are you? Mike Fenton.
Aye.
Bill Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. I believe it's a seven zero vote. The motion passes, the minutes are accepted. We have an item of correspondence. A memo of the town planer dated March 26, 2020 concerning administrative subdivision approval. Margaret W. Little, Wayne G. Lawrence, Rebecca L. King, and James C. King involving property at 260 and 266 Turner Avenue. Platte 190, 119 lots 28, 43, 44. May I have a motion to receive this correspondence?
Motion made by Art Weber.
So moved. BJ.
A second. Did you second BJ?
Yes.
Motion's made and seconded to receive this correspondence. Is there any discussion? Seeing no hands. Mr. Pyrick.
Aye.
Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Seven zero vote, motion passes. Next item on the agenda are continuances. According to information that the town planer distributed items 4A, 4B, and 4C will all be continued. Is there anyone here representing those items, Ron?
I don't believe so, but we should ask if, if anyone is in the attendees who is representing either any of these, the Haran application, Gullison application, or Paradise application, you can raise your hand. There's one person on the phone. If you are on the phone, you can do a star nine to raise your hand if you wish to speak. I see no hands raised.
Okay. Why don't we take all three together then? May I have a motion to continue items 4A, 4B, and 4C on the agenda?
Chomo, Bill Nash.
Second, Art Weber.
Motion is made and seconded to continue items 4A, 4B, and 4C. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, these items should be continued to the June 10th meeting, 6:00 PM.
Thank you. I'm in the motion to.
So moved.
Somebody's ringing.
Yeah, that's me. Excuse me, hold on. Sorry about that. I was getting a call right in the middle of.
Maybe it's important, you should take it.
With the maker of the motion amended to continue these to the June 10th meeting.
Yes.
So the motion, we have an amended motion to continue items 4A, 4B, and 4C to the June 10th meeting. Is there any discussion? I see no hands. We will call the roll for the vote. Mr. Pyrick.
Aye.
Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Excuse me one minute.
How many else?
It's on you. I'm in the middle of a Zoom meeting. Can I call you back? I'll call you back, okay? I gotta go. Bye bye.
Welcome back, Mr. Chair. We got it.
At least we know one hazard with these at-home meetings. Sorry about that. Uh, let's see. Uh, I believe the last one I called was Mr. Chumo. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So these three items are continued to the June 10th meeting. We now move to item 4D, which is a, a public hearing. So may I have a motion to open the public hearing? So do you want to?
Point of order, Mr. Chair, if you read that into the record, just so we know what it is, is that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me read it. Yes.
Read it into the record, please.
Yes, thank you. This is a, a public hearing, request of Irongate Properties LLC for waivers from certain design standards, the Middletown rules and regulations regarding the subdivision and development of land, section 521 for proposed renovation siding materials of an existing commercial building located at 438 East Main Road, assesses Platte 113, lot 13. And I should mention that on this item, we are dealing with the waiver only.
Motion to open a public hearing.
May I, did you make the motion, Bill?
Open a public hearing, yes.
Second, Art Weber. Second, Art Weber.
A motion is made and seconded to open the public meeting. Is there any discussion? Mr. Pirick.
Aye.
Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye. The public hearing is open. I believe someone is here to represent Iron Gate.
Yes, Mr. Fox is here. David Fox, the attorney for the applicant.
And can you put him on video?
He's on, he's on.
All right, hold on a second.
The one with no tie.
Oh, there he is. Now I got him. Okay.
And he's got the gold, he's got the Golden Gate Bridge behind him, too.
Up in the clouds, Dave.
You know that. So you have a letter, I think, that was sent to the planning board by John Brooks Advanced Building Concepts, which basically describes the reason why they're looking to do something to the building. Apparently, they have water intrusion around the building, and they're looking to put a maintenance-free barrier, if you will, an exterior on the, on the building, and what they've proposed is a Hardy plank lap siding, which Mr. Brooks described as a four-inch cladboard-style cementous siding, which is a synthetic material that is made to resemble the type of materials you would see in, in traditional buildings, such as the clavoured siding.
Question?
Any, any questions from members of the board?
I have a question to, Paul.
Okay, you're not, yeah, I see hands being raised on. Bill, go ahead.
Thank you, Dave, for that.
And BJ.
Two questions. One, I guess one question and one statement. The, the memo and the letter that I'm looking at, which, is this the clear, the cedar mill, the smooth, the bearded, beaded, or cedar mill, or the beaded smooth? Which, which one is it that you're looking at?
I don't know which one it is, Bill. Clarification was not made.
Okay. Not too much of an issue with me on that, but I support the effort. Frankly, I like the, I like the information that Mr. Brooks provided with his letter. In fact, I'd like to see the, the building look like that, that elevation, if possible. If, if anybody can say that it's a nice-looking, a nice-looking house, but I know that can't happen. I know they're looking to just go over it, but I, I support the, the application at this point.
BJ.
Yes, thank you. I, I thought we had some discussion on this earlier, and that we decided that we wanted something more colonial or something more in keeping with Middletown. I think Art brought this up also. And I also asked a question as to what the purpose of the building would be, and that I had heard it was up for sale. And I made the comment that it would make a wonderful, at least in my estimation, senior housing for the town of Middletown. And I don't know whether or not the people involved had gone any further with it, but it's probably not up to us here, of course. But I am concerned about the facade. I like the brick that is there. And I noticed that there was some construction going on a couple of weeks ago, outside digging a trench to the sidewalk. And I don't know if it was putting in a new septic or water or what. It's just curiosity.
Mr. Fox, do you wish to respond?
I, I'm not sure what the, the digging was, but keep in mind that the John Brooks letter indicates that they have a water problem and intrusion problem. They may well have been to try and address that, at least in part, but reality is that nice brick that you see is what is allowing the water to seep into the building and makes the bottom level quite challenged for, for living in. As far as the property being for sale, it is not for sale. It is not being marketed. However, probably two or three different parties have approached the Sullivan family with interest in the building, so I, I'm not telling you that, that one of those might, might not come to fruition. I don't know. But they are not actively marketing it. You won't find it on any Realtors listing. And most of the people that have approached thus far have plans for it. Some of them are, are consistent with what Ms. Owen has suggested in, in the residential application. I will point out that notwithstanding how much everyone likes the colonial look, keep in mind that the building that it's attached to has a much different look to it, and this will make it far more consistent, one with the other than, than what currently exists.
Thank you.
BJ, you can clear your raised hand now. Is there anyone else who has just any other?
Mike Fenton's raising his hand.
Yeah, okay, Mike?
Yes.
And then Bill.
Okay. So in John Brooks's letter, he says that the this will be a similar look to the adjoining building. Okay, and then I see in the pictures that were presented, both buildings look like they are brick. They have a brick facade. And what's proposed is a cementous clapboard type of facade. So how is the cementous clapboard facade similar to a brick facade?
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm going, going to suggest that you probably have seen the building and are aware of the fact that there is clavoured side to it on what I believe to be the easterly side of the building. So if you come in onto, is that, what is it?
Forest Avenue.
Forest, onto Forest Avenue, and look directly at the building to your left, you'll see that, that clavoured side. There is brick also on the back side and on the north side of, of that second connected building.
Okay, because the pictures that I see, there's three pictures here, and they both show a brick siding.
Yeah, I think that.
They're all of the same building.
Are those all the same building, aren't they?
That's correct.
Oh, is the second picture possibly on the left there? Is there an extension there that shows what it would look like? The second picture I have, you know, shows the building. It has that sign Coastal Financial Island Tax Associates on it. On the left of it, there's like an extension. Is that what the clapboard siding would look like?
I think, I think so. That's, in the letter that we got from John Brooks, I think he indicated that it would be very similar to the siding on that adjoining building.
Yeah, it would, it would have been helpful to have a better look at that, you know, than, than just the pictures that were shown. So, but I, you know, I'm okay with it. I, you know, I, I prefer the cementous clapboard to the vinyl siding. I think that would have a better appearance. Well, I'm willing to support it for that.
Okay, Bill, your hand is showing. Do you have another question?
I do. So again, I still support this application, but Dave, a question came to mind as we were talking about this and as I, as I reread the letter. One, I want to be clear that it is a, going to be a four-inch lap. I know with Hardy plank, you can get away with five, six, seven, and sometimes eight, depending on what you do. But I want to make sure that you, you, you know, as the letter states, I probably would look for a condition on our, on the decision to do so, that it remains as four-inch lap as indicated in the letter. And secondly, are all sides of each of the buildings being done? Are they doing all the sides? Are they leaving any brick exposed?
There will still be brick exposed on the existing attached building.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
And the applicant has no issue with making a condition of the approval that it be a four-inch lap. I believe that's what is proposed and expected.
Thank you.
Are there any other, any other comments from the members of the board?
Yes, Paul, I don't have the hands, but you can't see me, but I've got a question.
Okay, I'd go for it.
I, I think this is about, I want to see exactly which flavor clapboard we're going to pick to put on that building. I think there's four options. I'd really like to see which one is the preferred one that will go up on the building before I vote on it.
Which one do you like, Art?
Well, I, I don't know. I can't see them. I don't know what they look like.
I have them in front of you. I'm sorry.
No. See, normally we would have these, you know, brought to the planning board meeting, and we could look at each one and decide which one looked the best. I can, I think that's my only question. Which one architecturally would be the one probably most pleasing to the eye? That's my thought.
Mr. Fox, can you specify which one can, will be used?
I can't. I don't, I don't, I don't know which one that, that they have planned. But I, but I would suggest that we, we might be hair-splitting here. And it's a clavoured-looking application. I, I'm sure that, that if you look at the building that exists, you'll get a real good idea of what they plan on putting on the brick, all brick building. So if, if that satisfies you as to the way the building is going to look, then I, I think you advance it. But I, like I said, I, I think that essentially you're kind of splitting hairs to say you want to be able to pick between four different options when any one of them would satisfy the section of the Middletown planning boards review process.
Mr. Fox, could you at least say that the, the one that most closely matches the other building will be the one that is selected?
Yes.
Art, is that satisfactory to you?
I could live with that, yes.
All right, so at this point, we have, I guess, two conditions. One is that it's a four-inch lap, and the other is that it's the, it's the one that most closely matches what is on the other building. Are there any other comments from members of the planning board?
Just a comment. Sorry, just another comment. Yeah, no. I think that's a great question, Art. And, and as, as we've developed the historical ordinance that we've done more recently, this would have been a, a great opportunity to ask for an opinion from the historical board that we have not signed off on yet, but just I wanted to use that as an example, but I think it's a great question. I, I think we've, we've, we've solved the the decision of, you know, what, what most closely resembles, but I think it's a good example of what a historical board can do for us down the road and give us an opinion on what they believe is the most appropriate. And that all obviously could have been done prior to the meeting, but because of the situation, it doesn't. But just a comment, and I'm, I'm looking forward to, I, I probably would have done this, would have, would have requested a referral to that board, but I'm satisfied with the most closely resembling.
Are there any other comments from members of the board? Are there any comments from members of the public?
So anyone who's attending as a member of the public that wishes to speak, if you're on the Zoom app, you can raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can hit star nine.
Move to close the public hearing.
Ron, is anyone indicating?
No, there's no hands raised.
Okay. Bill has made a motion to close the public hearing.
And by Art.
Art, did you step in the motion?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. A motion is made and seconded to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? BJ, your hand is up. Do you have something to say?
No, Art said it for me.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, all right. So let's vote on the motion. Mr. Pirick.
Aye.
Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so the public hearing is closed. May I have a motion for approval for the waiver request subject to the two conditions that were mentioned, a four-inch lap and a selection of the one that most closely resembles what is on the other building. May I have that motion, please?
Motion to approve with two conditions, Art Weber.
Thank you, Art. Someone seconded?
Second, John Chumo.
Thank you, John. Motion's made and seconded to approve the waiver request with those two conditions that were mentioned. Is there any discussion? BJ, your hand is still up. Is that?
No, it's supposed to be down.
Okay, just. Any discussion?
Sorry.
Okay, we will vote. Mr. Pirick.
Aye.
Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, David.
Thank you all. You guys have a nice evening. This has been fun and interesting.
Don't jump off that bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Okay, have a nice evening.
The next item on the agenda is under new business. Item 5A, a request of Peter Galoppo, Saltwood Farm Development LLC, for extension of the timeframe for recording of phases two, three, and four of the Saltwood Farm subdivision, Bailey Avenue and Satuus Drive, plat 126, lot four. And Ron, I'd like to ask you to introduce this item.
Well, Mr. Galoppo is joining us, and whoops, I just muted him by mistake. Peter's requesting an extension of the approval of the, well, for, three of the four phases of the Saltwood Farm subdivision. One of the phases has been recorded. Phases two, three, and four have yet to be recorded, and that timeframe, the, the deadline for recording has expired. We've had extensions on this before. We kind of let it slip in terms of the last extension expiring. So Mr. Galoppo is requesting that the board consider granting, I guess it would be a retroactive extension of that approval to allow him some more time before he records, but I'll let him to speak more on that.
Hey, Ron, as you know, I'm recusing myself on this issue.
That's right. Thank you, John. Thanks for reminding me. So for the record, John is recused on this.
Thank you.
Shall I?
I'm going to mute you. I'm going to mute you just to be safe.
Before we ask Mr. Galoppo for comments, I have a question for Peter.
Yes.
Peter, can we approve this retroactively?
You can. There's nothing, unlike some other parts of the zoning code, for example, there's nothing that specifically says that the request for extension has to come in before the period for recording expires. The only thing that the regulations do say is you have a right to grant an extension for good cause shown. Well, that's really.
So it sounds like.
Nothing in the regulations that would prevent you from granting the extension if you find that there's good cause for it.
Thank you. Mr. Galoppo, do you have any comments to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So it's a phased project, which really requires one foot to be put forward before the other. In this case, in phase one, there was a extension of the water main roughly 2,000 feet from Green End Avenue in Berkeley, down Paradise and up Bailey Avenue, which was a substantial project. And the, the second phase is to bring sewer from the other direction for phase three of the project. So phase three is dependent on both phase one and phase two. And economic circumstances have been difficult, and the money simply hasn't been there for me to execute and complete all four phases at one time. So we're bootstrapping this a little bit. Completed phase one in February, we're fortunate to have sold three of the lots there, and we're prepared to move forward now. You know, 2020 to, we expect to get the remaining work completed. You know, 2020 to, we expect to get the remaining work completed, other than perhaps shade trees and the, and the finished coat of asphalt on the remainder of the project.
Thank you, comments or questions from members of the planning board? Mike?
Has the planning board had a chance to do a site visit at this place?
I, I, I can't answer that.
This is an approved subdivision, so this, this is not something you would do a site visit at this point. The subdivision was actually approved many years ago.
Yeah.
In the process of being developed, and this is just an issue requesting an extension of the timeframe to record those final phases. So there's really no decision to be made in terms of the development itself, it's simply a decision on whether you wish to grant that extension of the time to record the plan.
I mean, the only reason I asked that, it's because I was looking at the, the plot layout here that was provided, and I, it's very illegible. You know, I, I can't even figure out, you know, what streets are bordering it, you know, I, I guess Bailey Avenue was one, and, you know, there's some other ones there too, but they're not legible on the, on the.
Well, I can, I can get you those plans in a better form after, after the meeting. But like I said, there's, there's really nothing in terms of the subdivision itself that you're approving, it's simply an extension of the timeframe.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from members of the board?
Yes, Paul, I have a question.
Art, and then BJ.
As far as I understand, the recording of a plan is really an administrative matter. The relationship to financial requirements for further work, I, I don't see the linkage. Oh, I think if you record something, you've got to start digging up all in the ground right away. So I, I unnecessarily disapprove of this, I just find that linkage between recording a plan and actual physical work done on that project. Don't make much sense to me, and we, from the hoary past, that's, this was a long, long project, it took a long time to come to fruition, and I applaud Peter for his perseverance here. That's, that's my only question, are we got administrators saying, and it's linked to financial stuff, I, I, it doesn't work, so that's my question.
Mr. Galoppo, do you wish to respond?
Yes, the, the recording of each of the plats is, is linked to a presentation of the performance guarantee. So in order to record each individual phase, I would have to post the performance guarantee. And then subsequently incur the cost for the development of that phase, and then seek to recoup.
That was not me.
My bad, I apologize. So the, the, the performance file would have to be posted for the entire project in order for me to have recorded the plats, you know, from the get-go. And the primary reason it's a phased project was because that, that isn't, wasn't possible financially. So I mentioned earlier, my, my first comment said, this is, we're bootstrapping this a little bit by obtaining funds from the phase one sales to move forward. So if I could simply record the plats, I would do so. But it's the performance guarantee requirement that is, is slowing it down for me.
Okay, that's, that satisfies me, thanks, Paul.
Okay, Art, BJ?
Yes, I have, first of all, a comment that a number of years ago, the planning board did do a site visit, a very thorough site visit. And I don't think that there are too many members on this board that went, I think Art is, Art the only one maybe, and myself, and.
I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, oh.
And I lived, I was on the board, but I, I remember that development very well.
You remember that, well, my point is, I would like to know what is the timeframe that Mr. Galoppo is requesting from the planning board?
The request is for an extension to July 31st of next year, 2021.
Oh, okay, I didn't have that down in my notes. Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the board? I have just one question, and that probably goes to Ron, do we have to specify in the motion? I assume we have to make it retroactive, do we have to specify the date to which it's retroactive?
That's probably a question for Peter, I don't think so, it's just a retroactive approval.
I, I think you're just extending it to the date that Mr. Galoppo has requested, or some other date that, that we're not comfortable with that particularly. Just, just simply approving an extension to date X is sufficient.
Okay, so are there any other comments or questions from members of the board?
And in the motion, you should just specify that it's for phases two, three, and four.
Okay, so may I have a motion for an extension of the timeframe for recording for phases two, three, and four of this project?
Motion made by Art Weber.
Second, Bill Nash.
Motion's made by Art, seconded by Bill. Is there any discussion on the motion? I will call a roll for voting, Mr. Pirick.
Aye.
Mr. Chumo.
He's recused.
He's recused, that's right, thank you, Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so it's a six zero vote in favor. Motion passes.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Peter. Thank you, members of the board, have a great night.
Say it, Peter.
The next item of business is item five B. This is a new item before the board, and it's one of the items that was on the prioritized list. Of the items from the cop plan that the town council wanted the planning board to address. And I guess during this time of interruption to our normal business activity. Planning staff, Ron and Rita have put this together. You have presumably all read this, and I will ask for some initial comments to give back to Ron and Reader, Rita. But Ron mentioned that it might be best if we don't act on this tonight, but rather table it until we can have a full discussion and, at a regular board meeting and set up a public workshop for this. So are there any, any comments to give back to Ron and Rita at this time?
What's the item?
It's, it's item five B, consideration of proposed amendments to the Middletown zoning ordinance. To regulate the installation and use of outdoor lighting per comprehensive plan action, item N V C.
And I would just, Mr. Chairman, as we discussed earlier too, and I spoke again with the solicitor today. At the advice of the solicitor and also the town council. We, we should be curtailing discussion of this nature during these virtual meetings because of the concern about the ability for members of the public to fully participate.
Just move to table it?
I would, I would just.
Continue it?
Continue it, request that the board members take an opportunity to review the drafts. I guess I would, you know, welcome any input that you all have in the, in the meantime, before we have a chance to meet in person. But again, we've been advised that any discussions of this type relating to matters that aren't, you know, immediate concern. We should hold off on those until we're able to meet in person.
Okay, so with the understanding that members of the board can provide feedback to Ron on their own. May I have a motion to continue this item to the June 10th meeting?
So, Mark.
I.
Bill Nash.
Why?
BJ.
Okay, hold on, hold on, I have a motion made by Bill Nash and seconded by BJ, is there any discussion?
Yes.
This is Art, I have, I was just thinking, if, if we just move it months to months, we're not going to get anywhere. Why not just make a blanket tabling until we meet a normal session again, that covers. Because we'll just be tabling this again next month, so the following month, if we're still meeting in a virtual manner.
If it's appropriate, I'll amend my motion to be that way.
So we have an amended motion to table this item until we are meeting in person again?
Second the, second the motion.
And BJ is seconding the amended motion. Is there any discussion on the amended motion?
Yes, I, I have my, I did raise my hand, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I see it, now he's going to call on you, go ahead, Bill.
I thank you, just a quick question, Ron, it's an interesting read, where did you get the standards, is it, is there, where do you just start from, I guess, is what I?
A lot of the research that, that this draft comes out of was done by Kevin, you know, months ago at this point, back when he was here. So he was looking at ordinances from other locations and kind of melded them together into one. So again, this is, as, as with all these zoning amendments that we look through, there, it's a starting point, it's a straw man to have you guys look at, pick apart. And then we'll have, you know, when we're able to, we'll have more discussion on what the details should be.
Thank you, it's, it's interesting, it looks, it's a, it's a, it looks like a good, you addressed a lot of good stuff in here, I like it so far.
I'll pick it apart, we'll, we'll have some time to look through it and, and talk about it.
Do I need a motion to table this?
I think there is a motion on the table to table.
Any further discussion on the, that's right, the amended motion.
Dinner is on the table, too.
Any further comments on the amended motion? I will call a roll, Mr. Pirick.
Aye.
Mr. Chumo. We never brought Mr. Chumo back to the meeting.
Whoops. All right, John, there you are.
All right, Mr. Schumow says aye.
Did you hear the discussion?
Yes, I did.
Oh, good, oh, good, okay. Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so this item is tabled until we have a, an in-person meeting. Next item on the agenda is item five C. Consideration of proposed amendments to section 400 definitions and section 725 of the Middletown zoning ordinance. Regarding ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation, including design requirements for all arrays and specific provisions for arrays mounted on carports and canopies. I would like Ron to make some introductory comments on the origin of this. And then I suggest that we treat this the same as the one we just dealt with, Ron.
Right, so where this is coming from, as we've received at least one, maybe two inquiries through the building inspector's office for installation and construction of carports to support solar arrays. In commercial parking lots, and not a bad idea, I think it's probably a good use, a good place to put solar arrays. The problem is our zoning ordinance doesn't address that as an option. All we have at this point in the zoning ordinance is ground mounted arrays, which have limitations such as the height of the array being no more than 12 feet. And other limitations that would not be practical in a carport situation. So the proposed amendments would institute carports into that, into the ordinance. And the other thing that I've asked or suggested the board consider is making some amendments that would make the conditions or the limitations on development of solar, ground mounted solar arrays in residential districts more clear. Particularly as it relates to limiting the amount of land area that's covered by the solar arrays. The language in the current ordinance isn't terribly clear. And I, again, just took the opportunity, since I was looking at the carports, to, to also look at that language. So that's kind of two parts of the draft that you have in front of you.
Thank you, Bill, I see your hand up, do you have a comment?
I, I was gonna put it up, I see it's down, but I just, yeah, the same question, Ron, relative to, to that. Again, it looks like a good, a good amount of info there. Wait, did you, did you pirate those standards as well? Hope so.
Well, no, actually, it was just kind of tweaking what we already have in the ordinance.
Okay.
You know, there, there are some, at least in terms of the carports, some need to modify the height limitations and that sort of thing. I did a little bit of work on the requirements for buffering and landscaping. As far as the residential districts, I think the percentages would be the same in terms of the maximum coverage. The language in the current ordinance, though, when it talks about 25% maximum coverage, that 25% is based on the actual area of the panels. So the total, once you, you get the area of each panel, totals that up for all the panels, that's the way it reads right now. So really, the installation, with, once you get the panels on the ground and they're separated by certain, certain amount of space and they're fenced in. It's going to be much greater than 25% if you're only, so that, that's one of the things that I tweaked in there to specify that the area, the land area of the installation. Meaning the fenced in area is 25% max of the, of the property.
Okay, I, I'll look at it a little bit deeper, thank you, Ron.
Yeah, again, we should probably, again, curtail the discussion on this until we have an opportunity to, to do it in person. But in the meantime, if you have any questions or comments, feel free to get those to me.
Mike, you have your hand up, is, is this something in detail or?
In looking at this, I didn't see any structural requirements for, say, the carports or the canopies that the.
Mike, why don't you, why don't you give that feedback to Ron personally, and we'll save the discussion to when it's at an in-person meeting?
Okay.
Well, quick answer to that, that, that would be building code.
Yeah, not, not yet, right.
Okay, may I, may I have a, a motion to table this item to the next in-person meeting of the planning board?
Motion made by Art Weber.
Second, by Bill Nash.
Motion's made and seconded to table item five C. To the next in-person meeting of the planning board. Any discussion? I will call a roll, Mr. Pirick.
Aye.
Mr. Chumo.
Aye.
Mrs. Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Fenton.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is updates. I will, on this one, simply ask, are there any comments on the status report that Ron distributed? Raise your hand, show, show your raised hand if you have any comments. I see none, otherwise, I will simply ask, is, on all the committee reports, is there anyone who has a compelling report to make at this time? I hear nothing and see no raised hands. Our, our next regular meeting, or somewhat irregular meeting, will, is scheduled for June 10th. Is there anything else to come before this meeting? I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm moved.
Second.
BJ made the motion to adjourn the meeting, and I believe that was Art who seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? I will avoid the roll call and simply adjourn the meeting, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, everyone.
Good job, everybody.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Ron, are you really not?
Thank you, Martha.
What's that, Bill?
You, are you really in your basement?
I am really in my basement.
Come on, take that, take that screen off, I want to see.
I want to see the water heater.
Hold up.
I don't believe that, that looks great.
Hold on, I got it.
Oh my God, the green screen, yeah. That's, that's great, Rita, you're next.
It works.
Rita, you're next, you gotta.
I'm really in my house.
That's a great.
Thank you, Peter.
Night, folks.
Night.
See you.
Night, everyone stays.
Stay safe.
Thank you.